All the meeting orders start with the pledge of allegiance followed by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now join us in a moment of silence. Thank you. All right, so item one on the agenda is citizen concerns. Any concerns that are not on the agenda would like to be brought up? I did have one from John Malloy beforehand discussing the AVI for this room here. And we discussed the 18th as a date for them to install that, so we would not, or the week of the 18th, so we would not have a supervisors' meeting here in this room on the 18th. Potentially may have approval of claims or something out in the county meeting, out in Salix if that gets scheduled. So keep your tabs posted two weeks from now. Item two, approval of the agenda. I'll move that.
Second.
Motion by Raddick, second by DeWitt. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes five zero. Moving on to the consent agenda. Items three through eight constitute a consent agenda of routine action items to be considered by one motion. Items passed unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Item three is approval of the minutes of the September 27th, 2022 meeting. Item four, approval of claims. Item five, approve property tax refund request for parcel 894-734-257012 in the amount of $1,085. Item six from board administration, approval of resolution approving petition for suspension of taxes through redemption process for initials AS. Item seven from human resources, approval of memorandum of personnel transactions. You had one to...
Melissa Thomas, human resources director. We would need to amend Timothy Jordan's action. He is actually going on call and not resigning at this time. So we're going to reinstate him as an employee.
All right, so I'll move that amendment.
Second.
Motion by Raddick, second by Taylor. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes five zero. Moving on to item eight. Thank you, Melissa. Secondary roads, A is approval permit to work in the county right of way for Rick, or Rich Derosher. Eight B is approval utility permit for installation of fiber optic cable for SDN communications. That ends the consent agenda. Any discussion on any of those items? And I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Raddick, second by DeWitt. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes five to zero. Moving on to item nine, which is Safe Place Sioux Land, approval and presentation of Domestic Violence Awareness Month proclamation. Do we have this proclamation printed out? I don't really have one up here. So I got to read it as a proclamation, right? Whereas domestic violence is a serious crime affecting individuals and families in all Sioux land communities, all races, ages, incomes, levels, lifestyles, and genders. And in fact, is probably affecting somebody you know, and in every nine seconds, somebody experiences the crime of domestic violence. And whereas one in three women and one in nine men will be a victim of violence in their lifetime, domestic violence violates an individual's human rights by destroying dignity, security, and self-worth due to the systemic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic control or abuse. Safe Place works every day to help end those acts of violence and to help rebuild the lives of those, of the survivors. And whereas in Sioux land, Safe Place is available 24 hours a day, every day of the year, and last year responded to nearly 2,000 victims fleeing domestic abuse. And despite high census and global pandemic, no one in an unsafe situation was turned away. And whereas the impact of domestic violence affects all the members of the community, and only a coordinated community response will put a stop to these atrocious crimes, and ensure funding is continuously available to provide these life-saving services. Now therefore, Woodbury County Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim the month of October 2022 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Nobody's here to receive the proclamation, but I do want to say thank you to Safe Place Sioux Land and the work you do, and we appreciate that.
Oh, do you have approval?
Oh yeah, sorry. Yeah.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Taylor, second by DeWitt. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes five zero. Moving on to item 10. There was a Summit Carpet Solutions project update. Did they not make it here for that? Well, he doesn't look like he's from Summit Carpet Solutions, so. All right, well, I guess there's no update. Item 11, Chief Judge Patrick Todd, approval to reserve the LEC conference room for juvenile court during construction at Trosper Hoyt.
Good afternoon. Patrick Todd, Chief Judge, Third Judicial District. I was here a couple of weeks ago just to put this on your radar with the repair work that needs to be done to the Trosper Hoyt building. Kenny can give you the dates more specifically than I can.
So I talked to Kenny before the meeting today. He was anticipating three weeks to a month.
Right. Three to four weeks is what we're anticipating barring any unforeseen circumstances. The juvenile court will have to be relocated during that timeframe, Trosper Hoyt. And we identified the training area in the law enforcement center as an ideal location to move juvenile court to. It's just one block from the current location. We have office space for the judges in the LEC already, which is right across the hall from where this training area is. We're just under the impression that without board approval, we may or not get it on a consistent basis. So we really need it consistently for the three or four week window. So we're just asking the board to approve that and give direction to staff to make that area available to us for that limited time.
I'll go ahead and move that.
Second.
Motion by Raddick, second by Taylor. We did discuss this last week, but was there any other additional questions?
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes five zero. Item 12, zoning coordinator, approval to set the date and time for three public hearings for a proposed zoning ordinance map amendment for parcel 884-701200009 from the Agricultural Preservation Zoning District to General Commercial Zoning District for dates October 11th at 4:45 PM, October 18th at 4:45 PM, and October 25th at 4:45 PM. And earlier, as I said, we will not be here on the 18th, so we'll have to eliminate that one or move them, the remaining two back a week. So I'll move to amend that to say, well, I'll move it to say October 11th at 4:45, October 25th at 4:45. And what was the other?
I would probably suggest with the logistics of publication that we start off on the 25th, go with the first, and then the 8th possibly.
So 25th, first, and the 8th. So October, so that's November 1st and November 8th at 4:45 on all those dates. Is that clear to everybody? All right. So that's my motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Raddick, second by Taylor. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes five zero. Item 13, thank you, Dave, from board administration. A is approval of resolution authorizing the execution of a memorandum of agreement with Sioux Land Mental Health Services and fixing the date of October 25th, 2022 at 4:40 PM for a hearing on the proposed issuance of revenue bonds or notes pursuant to chapter 419 of the Iowa Code. Anything you want to say on it there? I know we've discussed it.
No, it's the same as we've done for all the other cap, for all the other projects of this type, which are qualified bank loans. And it's four million, up to four million, which still leaves us a couple, two, three million left.
All right, so that's October 25th at 4:40. I'll go ahead and move that.
Second.
Motion by Raddick, second by DeWitt. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes five zero. Item B, approval of termination notice to DA Davidson and Company as dissemination agent. And do you want to talk on this and C?
What we have here is we signed a deal with DA Davidson, which Nate Summers was the representative. He has moved over to a company called UMB Bank, which is basically the same thing as DA Davidson. So with that, we'd like to move over with him. The benefit of this is it's $500 a year cheaper. Goes from $1,000 filing fee to 500. They, what they do, they do the IRS reports required for our bonds, for our tax increment district. So they take care of for the next 20 years. Or I think it's, on this, it's 10 years, I believe, on our tax increment, as a 10-year loan.
So in fair reporting treatment, can the headline be "County Saves 50% on Jail Project Costs"?
This is on the secondary roads.
Just throwing it out there.
The LEC's got to do the same thing.
Yeah.
But it's just a better benefit, and Nate is familiar with our two loans.
This is on the gravel project?
It's on the gravel.
Oh, okay.
The LEC will do the one on the two loans for the 25, 20...
Because aren't they doing the same thing for... They were our financial advisor on the jail.
Yes. Yes. We're doing the same exact thing we're doing here, only it's for the jail. This is for the tax increment.
Okay. Good. I'll move item B.
Second.
Motion by Raddick, second by DeWitt. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes five zero. Item C is approval of dissemination agent agreement with UMB Bank.
I'll move that.
Motion by DeWitt, I'll second. Second by Raddick. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes five zero. Moving on to item 14, which is report on committee meetings.
So at a Rolling Hills meeting, and we talked about the Ursh House, which is an intensive residential services home that will be here in Sioux City, and how they're trying to comply with federal rules and regulations, which has been kind of a theme that we've heard through many different areas. While they're doing that, they're trying to make sure that it has the potential to really meet the needs of those intensively needing those kind of services. We also talked about for the future that the state looks like it's going to potentially take more and more authority, and how we want to design a budget process because we may not have as much authority as we once did. We are going to need to cut some of the budget because of the one-time funding, as we had to spend down one-time balances. So my preference, and what I advocated, is we keep the status quo of regional budgeting. And then if the state does what the state does, then that's outside of our control. But we ought to put forward our priorities and working with our mental health providers. And then finally, talking about the 2080 agreement, which is a perpetual issue, just getting one last county to sign. The whole issue seems to be over regional versus county employees, but hopefully we can get there in the end. That's all I've got.
Keith, I do have, we do have an issue, and I'm not sure how it's going to play out yet, but on the landfill commission with the new, with the new setup with the new landfill owners. I don't know what's going to land yet. Dennis might know more about this lately because he's been talking with some folks, but Sergeant Bluff has opted out, as I understand it.
They did delay that last Tuesday night after I talked to them because we needed to get the numbers put together. I do have the numbers put together now. I discussed it with Keith a little bit before the meeting. Actually, if Sergeant Bluff does pull out, it really doesn't affect the landfill because we go by per capita. So right now Sergeant Bluff is donating under the new rules, which is two and a half, 2% or two and a half percent up to 4% is the max they can increase. So CPI for next year, for July 1st, '24 will be more than 4%. So I plugged in 4%. So with that said, our shares will not be affected that much except by 4%. Sergeant Bluff pulling out will have no effect on us whatsoever because we're going by per capita. Now, it could affect Sergeant Bluff when they go before the city council down there, and Sergeant Bluff, Gil goes before them because then they'll have to determine what they're going to make up. Now, if they aren't out there, what is their per capita going to be down in Sergeant Bluff? That's not the landfill's problem or our problem here. Our problem is all we have to come up with a little more money, 4% more than we're paying now. And also, that'll take effect July 1st, '23. We're requiring in their contract to have the numbers to us before January 1st so we can have budgeting for us and the rural cities. Now, it will affect the rent that we pay. We were collecting $60,000, I believe, from the landfill. Gil is rent. They did away with that about two or three years ago, and it's spread out now to all the cities participating. So with that case there, we've got absorbed from the cities and the county, $15,000. In our case here, our share of the rent will go up to $9,000 in '24, '25, '23. So really, it didn't have a big effect with Sergeant Bluff possibly. We don't know. But what I've been told, though, that they cannot haul garbage outside the county except Gil to their landfill. That's why I have a transfer station. This does raise a question, and it's got to be raised somewhere, with Hornick and Smithland. They've opted not to be in the landfill. They haul their garbage from known county. Now, we have to have somebody look at this, say, can they legally haul it there? Have somebody collect it and haul it out of the county. It should be going to our landfill. That's a question we're having to ask the landfill's attorney or somebody to find out if that's right or wrong. So this has raised some questions in other areas just because of Sergeant Bluff.
I think Pearson's in a bad situation too, because I don't think Gil goes to Pearson.
I'm not sure where they go. I can find that out from Jeanette.
I thought ours was just a transfer station that goes out of the state anyway.
Yes, but they're allowed to under the situation we have.
Oh.
It's all hauled there, not out of county, then they take the transfer point over there. So it's just a question to be asked. But Sergeant Bluff isn't as erratic as we thought it could be, where we got to take that 120, divide it to all their cities, it's per capita. So instead of the budget being 458,000 total, it'll be 356,000, 58,000. Where they'll make it up is when they deal with Sergeant Bluff, if they pull out. But they delayed it until after November 9th. We're having a landfill meeting. After that, they'll probably have a city council meeting to decide what they want to do. But they ought to notify a pullout by December 14th if they're pulling out. So they have time to have a meeting after the landfill meeting. So it's pretty important we have all the members of the landfill there, which means all the city mayors.
Did that change the contract that we did too? The seven-year?
Yeah, it's seven, it's...
Did that get postponed until November as well, then?
What?
Did that get postponed until November as well?
9th, yeah.
Okay.
The contract is a seven-year contract, a five-year organic extension. So it's really a 12-year contract.
Because we barely had a quorum the other night, or that last one.
No. We, Jeanette's got to make it a parrotive, or Mr. Nelson down there says, mayor who's the chair, has to really get on these cities to be there. And they have an E911 meeting before that, so hopefully they'll all be there.
Do they have the ability to send the meeting notices where it like automatically goes into their phone's calendar? Because...
I don't know that. Jeanette may have that.
It's awfully hard to miss a meeting that's in your phone calendar and...
And then we asked, I had to ask some of the mayors to stay, represent some cities in the E911 meeting, because they started to leave, said, wait a minute, we still have a meeting here. Most of them stayed, some didn't leave. But whatever happens, happens, and they're going to have to pay the bill. So they ought to be there to listen to it.
Right. So I had that as some of my questions for board concerns was on the 2080, or we have an agreement with cities now. Is it required? We have to have a rural county landfill? I mean, I think Iowa Code says you have to have a county landfill, but can we have a 2080 agreement with, say, Sioux City and use the transfer station out on the east end of town and just have one transfer station in the county?
So you mean Danbury have to haul their garbage up to Sioux City?
Well, maybe they look at a 2080 with Ida County somewhere, you know.
Just they'd haul it out of state, out of county, I mean.
Is there a smarter way of doing this?
DNR, I think. Joshua, DNR tapped into that one, did they? Or do you know?
Well, I think given the fact that we have buried garbage out there, there's continued monitoring of that.
Yeah, it's continued monitoring. It's closed, but all it is is a transfer station.
Right. So that's what I'm saying. Do we need to have that transfer station out there? Obviously, we got to keep monitoring the ground and paying for the soil testing and all that.
And that's only for a period of years, too. We have over half a million dollars laying out there in this post-closer fund. And if we never use it, then eventually that gets distributed back out. But it may be 10, 20 years from now.
Might be 50 years from now, but... I don't know. Maybe it's worth figuring out because, I mean, if we can't get quorums at meetings, that's really frustrating.
It's a struggle last meeting. We were sitting there counting about three or four times to get to eight out of 15. And two of them were sitting here. We did two in a row, though. If we got two in a row after two and a half years of nothing. Yep. It's frustrating, especially for our supervisors to go out there and then not a year to quorum. Brownies, really good. I think for no other reason, they've got to show up for some good food.
Brownies from the dump.
No, they were from like, they were from a grocery store.
They're from Glenn's retirement thing, weren't they?
That Raddick will find food anywhere.
But he's not representative, though.
He shows up anyway.
They're the supervisors.
So I don't know. If there's, if there's ways we can get around, you know, having, you know, transfer station duplicated in our county anyway.
Give me an example, Salix. I asked the mayor down there, Kevin Nelson, and he said they may use it once or twice a year.
Right.
For $9,000. Is it really worth it to them? But the question is, where do they haul their garbage to? Do they use the transfer points of Mobile? Or where do they haul their garbage?
Well, at some point, you could almost buy an old, what do you, those dump? Yeah, like the big dumpster, and just throw it in the middle of town, let everyone throw their trash in there, and then...
So what are the next action steps?
Three times a year, empty it out.
Who, who can provide the answers to whether or not we statutorily have to have a, or we can do this? Is there... I mean, I think it's a good discussion. I just want to make sure it doesn't die here, you know? What's our next steps then, to find out who...
Well, part of the reason I'm not really up to speed on it is that under the 2080, the landfill has their own attorney.
Oh, sure.
So the county attorney's office doesn't represent the landfill. I can look at it from the standpoint of whether, to what extent the county as an entity has to be involved. Each of the cities has their own obligations as far as providing trash services to the residents there. So I don't ultimately know the answer of, as a whole, does it have to look the way that it looks now? But I can look into it more.
Thank you.
Well, a lot of the cities have curbside pickup, don't they, as far as...
They hire somebody to come do it, but where do they haul it to? I'm assuming they go to the landfill and dump it there, and then Gil hauls it out.
Yeah, but Sergeant Bluff had, Sergeant Bluff had the scenario you're talking about of putting dumpsters down there, and they were getting things dumped there that should not have been done.
Okay.
And so there was no policing it, no way to watch it. And then, then it got into a big fight of where do these electronics go? Where do the car batteries go? Because that was, those were the kind of things getting dumped off.
Sure.
Probably in the dark night, and then Gil wouldn't take it.
Right.
Because it wasn't properly disposed of.
Makes sense. Well, I guess that, anybody else to have a question on the landfill side of it? Or any other, so that was either you guys have any? I did not have any last week. Citizen concern, round two. Come on up.
Doyle Turner, 2738 200th Street, Mobile. First, I want to say a big thank you to you guys for, especially Jeremy, for working with Mid-American and trying to get on board with them to help them with their issues with coal plants. And I guess I feel like we're going to try and go to the Iowa Utilities Board and see if we can't help this issue along. But I really appreciate you guys taking the time and taking it seriously and moving that forward. It means a lot. I do have one other question. I read part of an article online, and I haven't been able to find it since. And it has to do with the elections. My understanding is that the absentee ballots are being kept at the Sioux City Museum. Is that correct?
That'd be Pat's department.
No.
Okay. Just a curiosity question. Where are they kept?
Right now, we don't have it because they haven't grown up.
Right, but during, during the election, when they come back?
They are kept in a locker room down there in the basement.
Okay, all right. Like I say, I couldn't find the article again, and I, I wasn't sure, and I just wanted some clarification on that. Thank you.
I would say during the week, I had a lot of people come up to me and, you know, say, say a thank you to the Board of Supervisors for meeting with Mid-American on that, which rarely do, you know, I get stopped out in public and even recognized, I think. So, so there were multiple people that, you know, said thank you. So I wanted to, you know, at least let you guys know because you're initiating all that, so.
Appreciate that.
Yeah.
Thanks for bringing it to our attention.
Any other citizen concerns? Board concerns?
I'm going to mean out in Hornick tonight, and I, Mark I see is here. You know, this has been something that a lot of the Hornick residents have been really wanting to see the project within town and north of town done in terms of paving, and they've been very patient since the letting in 2021. And I think the problem's just being exacerbated by the waiting. So I'm hopeful that within a week or two, they get going. And, you know, we only have so much legal recourse, but they're going to hit their 100-day mark, in which we're going to start charging them, I don't know if it's $1,500 a day. And I know that they are relying on their supposition that the material is not ready for them to be able to do the work that they need to do, but I think...
Available is, is what it, is what the problem is. Project, like you said, was let in October 2021. Late start date on the project was May 23rd, 2022. We had our pre-construction meeting that day. Working, working day count started that day. The contractor had the best intentions of starting paving within five to six weeks after they started removal of the pavement. As things worked out, pavement removal began May 31st. It was done June 14th. Subgrade preparation started July 7th. The subcontractor was later moving in. Grade and sub base work was completed the 27th of August. So that includes all the work that was done within the city. Starting June 8th, the supplier of cement powder for Godverson Smith, I mean, they're, they've always been a good reliable contractor. They're prominent in Ida County and Ida Grove. They're probably one of the biggest employers down there and tied to Gomaco, the equipment manufacturer as well. They've got a notice from Whole Sim again on June 8th that said that cement orders were running slow. Part of Whole Sim's supply was apparently coming from overseas, and they were having trouble getting it railed here. That's been the story from their supplier since. I've requested verification. The last we heard from their supplier was around that August 27th date. The latest response and communication we had from Godverson's operations manager, vice president, was that they would start paving within the town of Hornick the week of October 10th. And they would complete that portion of the job with ready mixed concrete that they were going to get either from Hanoa or Sioux City, wherever it was available from. We're really pushing them to make sure that they get the... Their concern is that they aren't going to be able to get enough cement to do the portion north all the way out to Highway 141. We're going straight out to 141 on Mobile Blacktop, and I think it's Grundy Avenue, and then on 300th Street, which goes over right by our... and then on 300th Street, which goes over right by our sand and gravel piles in Holly Springs. That portion's also being done, so it's just shy of four miles of total paving. The contractor needs 12 to 16 loads of cement powder a day to keep his plant running. Wholesim's only promising him four. So we're trying to see, one of the concerns for Wholesim was the rail strike, which the Biden administration apparently negotiated a successful settlement to avoid, so I'm waiting to hear if there's any chance at all of their stepping up to make the supplies as needed. I checked with Darwin Bishop at DOT. His response today was that, you know, cement supplies are tight in Iowa, but this is the first project he's heard where they couldn't get enough material to keep the project moving, so. We're doing all that we can. We're currently sitting at 78.5 working days as of Friday, so there's 22 and a half more working days that will be in there before we hit the 100. Also, the contractor took on that extra six tenths of a mile for us to get that stretch from 300th Street up to old 141, the straight segment of the road. That's worth another 20 to 25 working days for that segment of the project, so. If they don't get into winter, we count a working day any time the day is fit to work. We're restricted by DOT specifications. The board's run into this before. If you remember the Highway 141 bridge project, we had the bridge done, and it sat there for six weeks waiting for the paving contractor to move in. I think we only had maybe eight, nine days liquidated damages on that job. You know, they had six weeks to get it done, and it took him seven. We can't force the contractor to come in. All we can do is assess penalty when it all comes down at the end of the year. Just so you understand how working days are charged, if the weather is fit to work, in other words, no rain, no snow, it's not too cold in the case of concrete paving, the contractor gets charged a working day for whether he's in there working or not. During the winter, once it freezes up and we don't have days where the temperature hits above 40, that would be a no-count day. But, you know, the potential is there for some fairly heavy penalties if the, if the project isn't completed before the end of the fiscal year. We ran into this with the Bronson Bridge, if you remember. They didn't get the bridge approaches poured. We put temporary gravel in, in that case, which is what we may end up with in the portion north of, of Hornick again. The contractor in that project paid $28,000 in liquidated damages. This one could be equally burdensome to the contractor should, should they go over the days. Again, we're doing everything to get them moving.
Have you had any communication from them in the last 48 hours to say this is what?
Forty-eight hours. My last communication I had with them was on Friday. I was giving the contractor a couple days to get back to me in response with my request from Friday. So if I haven't heard from him by midday tomorrow, I'll give him a call and see where we're at.
Appreciate that. I'd like a little more responsiveness from them. I, I think our constituents deserve that, and my, my fear is worst-case scenario, if you're saying 21 and a half days, you know, it can snow here by Halloween, and then that's an out.
Halloween, yeah.
You know, into perpetuity. Not perpetuity, but until the thaw of the next, you know. I think if people aren't happy right now, I don't want to fast forward.
Again, the, what we're pushing them for is to at least get the portion of work done within Hornick. If the county portion isn't done, it's a little less critical, although it'll be a mess in the spring if it isn't, if it hasn't got a hard surface on it. So we'll, we'll continue to work with them. Again, we, we had a reputable, or we have a reputable contractor with this. They claim the issue is beyond their power to solve. We're trying to verify that, both with information from the supplier and, and information that they're providing us. We'll do our best to keep it moving and get it going again.
Thank you.
Anything else? Either of you guys? All right, so I had a few different things. All right. Obviously, I brought up earlier the 18th for the AVI here in this room to be worked on. I did just confirm that with John, unless he texted me something else back just a second ago. No, that was not him. Let's see. So we're obviously going to try to keep requests minimal for the 18th. If you have something they want to get on, put it on for the week before or the week after. So I've talked with Heather about scheduling a meeting in Salix that week for an out-in-the-county meeting, where we can maybe approve claims and other things like that, then that need to be done that week. Mark, I did have something for you. Oh, yeah. Salix discussing creating a drainage district. I think they'd like to meet with you, so maybe.
I would, too.
Good, sweet. All right, and then, so in reading and researching on more of the pipeline discussion and issues, I think it would be something where we probably should just set our own setbacks as a county. And I don't know, 500 to 1,200 feet, I think, makes sense. I don't know what it should be, but I've researched some blasts and damage radius, and most are not beyond 500. And I'd just like the county to have something on the record in the books, and as far as a setback goes, and something beyond just the, the conditional use permit process. So if you can work that in, thank you. And that is all I've got for the meeting. So anybody else, last chance? We're adjourned.